So, all right, the way in my screen, way I see my screen here, where Jim Connor, I see you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Chris.
Okay.
Chris, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine. Can we do a master?
Everybody's got to mute their phones because there's so much background noise, I can't even hear you, Chris.
Okay. Hey, Brian, mute everybody. Councilmen can unmute their phones individually, please, manually, council people. All right, I want to just do a quick, this is going to be a very quick informal roll call. So Jim, I got you on audio, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Well, I'm.
I see video, do you have audio?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me, Paul?
Yes, thank you.
Um, let's see, Caitlin, I have video, could audio?
Can you hear me?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill O'Brien, I have audio for you.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Laura Danchow, audio, video?
Yes.
Excellent, you sound good. Greg, you can hear me still, can you unmute? Star six. Greg?
There we go, I'm muted.
Okay, thank you. Ken, Suzie? Yep, thank you. I got video and audio, Dave Harden? Audio, video?
He's chewing.
Having dinner. All right, and then Bill Perillo, I have audio on you. You can unmute yourself, Billy. Bill Perillo? Bill Perillo, can you hear me? You need to unmute yourself, Billy. Bill?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure. All right, so I think Margot, is that all of our council? I believe.
Yep, if we count you.
We count me, and I'm, I think I'm still on, all right.
You are.
All right. All right, Mayor Hoedek, good to see you.
Hi, Councilman.
Chris Timniak, and I, Dawn Savo, Dawn, you're good on or audio?
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you, excellent. Timniak, I heard attorneys, we have Hodgson, Tony Hodgson, audio, just do a quick test, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, and John Florrick, I know I heard you before, you're still on with me, right?
I'm here, yep.
All right, excellent, all right, so we're going to get going then. I'm going to call the meeting to order, Dave, at 7:04 PM. Thank you, everybody, it's May 21st, 2020. Council Clerk Chris Pia, Margot Paquette will be Council Secretary, recording, and Dave Wright's helping us on the tech. Again, remind, we're getting better at this every time, everyone, and I appreciate your patience. In mind, keep a couple of simple reminders, when you do go to speak, I will obviously recognize you, but still just state your name again, just for those listening on audio, so it's clear on the record, so that everyone can see who's talking. All right, I appreciate that. With that, I will call to order, and the first item on the agenda is item 1.1. I'll entertain Mr. Poissons.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for discussion purposes, I'd like to combine 1.1 and 1.2, if that's okay.
That's a motion to combine for discussion?
Hey, thank you, I'd also like to make an amendment to 1.1.
Hold on, Mr. Poissons.
We need to set, we need to second you, Mr. John Florrick here.
I have a second to Mr. Poissons' motion to combine 1.1 and 1.2 for discussion purposes, Mr. Harden.
This, no, Harden.
Okay, I see David. Got you, thank you, sir, any discussion on that? Okay, so we'll call that to a vote, so that's the first vote, Margot, if you could do a roll call, please?
This is Margot Paquette, Council Clerk, doing a roll call, vote for the motion to combine items 1.1 and 1.2 for discussion, Ms. Danchow?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Poissons?
Yes.
Mr. Kane? Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Harden? I'm sorry, was that a yes, Mr. Harden?
I'm here.
Are you voting yes?
Yeah, yeah, that's a.
All right, Mr. Tavarez?
Yes.
Ms. Shake?
Yes.
Mr. Pia?
Yes.
That is a unanimous vote.
Thank you all, motion passes 10-0, Mr. Poissons, I believe you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item, item 1.1.
Motion to approve item 1.1, do I have a second to that? Dave Harden, I see you, that's a second, okay, I got you on that, sir, thank you. Motion, so second by Dave, any discussion on the item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons, yes, sir?
I'd like to make an amendment to item 1.1.
All right, motion to amend, can you state your amendment, please?
I'd like to make an amendment to the ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the town of Stratford, Connecticut for the fiscal year July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021.
Ms. Laura Danchow, and I'll second that.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read the amendments that I'd like to propose, please.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Poissons.
That this amendment decreases our revenue expectations by $972,603, and therefore also decreases our expenses by the same amount, and we'll go through those now, by line item. For the revenues, under 01100-4012, property taxes, current levy, decrease of $472,603. Item 01100-4501, investment income, decreased by $500,000, for a total, as previously mentioned, of $972,603. Now for the decreases in expenditures, by line item. Item 01101-6102, Council Clerk, decrease $500. Item 01102-6061, Office of the Mayor, Mayor's Education, decrease $750. Item 01103-6061, Human Resources, HR Education, decrease by $2,500. Item 01103-6102, Human Resources, Printing and Stationery, decrease by $750. Item 01104-6102, Town Attorney, Printing and Stationery, decrease by $500. Item 01105-6061, Chief Administrative Officer, Education, decrease $500. Item 01108-6302, Town Buildings, Equipment Services, Decrease $750. Item 01108-6322, Town Buildings, Postage, Decrease by $20,000. Item 01108-6362, Town Buildings, Electric, Decrease by $750,000. Item 01108-6363, Town Buildings, Heating Oil, Decrease by $25,000. Item 01151-6621, Contingency, Workers' Compensation, Decrease by $41,109. Second. Item 01151-6626, Contingency, Auto Collision Claims, Decrease by $50,000. Item 01201-6741, Debt Retirement, Capital Improvements, Decrease by $6,000. Item 01251-6053, Employee Benefits, Fringe Insurance, Decrease by $250,000. Item 01251-6055, Employee Benefits, 401A Retirement Plan, Decrease $9,600. Item 01302-6020, Finance Accounting, Finance Payroll, Overtime, Decrease $2,500. Item 01302-6102, Finance Accounting, Printing and Stationery, Decrease $1,000. Item 01306-6061, Information Technology, Education, Decrease $1,000. Item 01306-6302, Information Technology, Equipment, Fractal Services, Decrease $7,000. Item 01354-6003, Senior Services, Payroll, Decrease $58,852. Item 01356-6422, Stratford Library Association, Library Decrease $125,000. Item 01358-6003, Economic Community Development, Payroll Regular, Decrease $52,000. Item 01401-6399, Public Works Administration, Outside Service, Decrease $5,000. Item 01403-6201, Public Works Maintenance, Building Supplies, Town Side, Decrease $10,000. Item 01403-6201, Public Works Maintenance, Building Supplies, Board of Ed Side, Decrease $10,000. Item 01405-6157, Public Works Highway, Gas and Oil, Decrease $45,000. Item 01405-6213, Public Works Highway, Materials, Decrease $5,000. Item 01405-6366, Public Works Highway, Streetlights, Decrease $30,000. Item 01407-6020, Parks Division, Board of Ed Related Overtime, Decrease $20,000. Item 01407-6151, Parks Division, Agricultural Supplies, Decrease $3,500. Item 01407-6157, Parks Division, Gas and Oil, Decrease $5,000. Item 01407-6217, Parks Division, Materials, Decrease $15,000. Item 01407-6221, Parks Division, Wood Waste. Hours, item 01408-6003, Sanitation Refuse, Payroll, Decrease $101,340. Item 01408-6020, Sanitation Refuse, Fractal Overtime, Decrease $10,000. Item 01408-6157, Sanitation Refuse, Gas and Oil, Decrease $10,000. Item 01408-6402, Sanitation Refuse, Hazardous Waste, Decrease $5,000. Item 01462-6024, Firefighting, Call Back, Decrease $50,000. Item 01462-6225, Firefighting, Other Repair and Maintenance Supplies, Decrease $15,000. Item 01462-6302, Firefighting, Equipment Services, Decrease $5,000. Item 01462-6061, Firefighting, Fire Education, 25, Decrease $25,000. Item 01462-6157, Firefighting, Gas and Oil, Decrease $7,500. Item 01471-6003, Police Administration, Payroll, Decrease $32,452. Item 01474-6003, Police Patrol, Payroll, Decrease $93,000. Item 01475-6020, Police Patrol Dispatch OT, Decrease $2,000. Item 01475-6302, Police Patrol Dispatch Equipment Service, Decrease $3,500. Item 01478-6061, Police Professional Standards, Police Education, Decrease $20,000. Item 01201-6921, Debt Retirement, Short Term Note Interest, Increase $450,000. Item 01407-6208, Parks Division, Field Maintenance, Increase $7,500. Item 01407-6218, Parks Division, Tree Removal, Replacement, Increase $5,000. Item 01407-6220, Parks Division, Playground Maintenance, Increase $3,500. Item 01358-6004, Economic Community Development, Payroll, Part Time, Increase $25,000. Item 01551-6802, Board of Education, Decrease $200,000. I also want to make note that there was a typo in the budget that was listed under Registrar Our Voters, it said there was four people in that office, and in the new budget, there is only three. These decreases are the same amount as the decrease in the revenue of $972,603. The mull rate as a result of this change will remain at the previously proposed 39.64. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Poissons. And Mr. Harden, I know you had made a motion for a second to that, now that he's read it, and would you still like to continue with that, sir? Or some, okay, I can't. I'm trying to give him the courtesy that I studied this before. Someone else like to second Mr. Poissons' amendment?
This is Laura Danchow, District 10, and I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Danchow. So, for purpose, okay, so we're going to open up for discussion on this, on this, on the amendment only, all right? So for the purpose of discussion, I'll open that up. Do I see anybody go around, so one of the things, like, keeping this aligned, is we'll go, we'll do an order here to see if anybody has any comments on it, and give everyone the opportunity to speak and voice their opinions. Who am I seeing up first? So I, on top of my screen, actually, I'll just go in order, so Caitlin, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Any, open up for discussion or comments, excuse me, yeah, discussion on this amendment, if you have anything, if you'd like to weigh in.
I have, I have, I have several comments, so how much time am I allotted?
Well, it's, I'll allow you to make your discretionary points, just keep it, keep it, just the way we're doing it is to this amendment only. If it's not to this amendment, if you want to do general comments, we can, we'll go back to the original, but keep it to this amendment.
My first comment would be in regards to senior services, but if I'm allowed to ask the question of, with this very long list of recommendations and then amendments to reallocate or decrease funding, I just find it very alarming that it's happening in this meeting, and not in the previous meetings that we've had. I'm lucky that I'm off today, so I could actually attend this meeting being last minute with 48 hours' notice. But my immediate concern is at the top, for our senior services, of a payroll deduction of $58,582. The library being decreased $125,000. I'd like to know, in regards to our public works department, in my opinion, the excessive decreases for that department to function, which was just finally actually starting to catch up, so to speak, with the extensive list of jobs that need to be done around the town. I'm just, I'm just looking, I'm looking at my list of what, I'm trying, I was trying to write down every, I'm actually kind of in shock.
I'd be happy to get you clarity on those items, Mr. Timniak?
Well, I mean, I'm looking at this in the sanitation department to be decreased, what does this say, by $101,340. I guess what I would be seeking is the rationalization from the majority of this council as to why each item has been decreased, which means we're going to be here for a very long time, and I'm absolutely happy to do that.
So here's to, I'm going to hand it over to Chris Timniak, so the bottom line is, we're in the midst of, I don't have to explain the world we're living in today, and the reality is, we're being fiscally prudent with the way our, our projections of revenues are for the town going forward.
And how did we, how did we suddenly get to that?
Let me answer your question, okay? Being fiscally prudent requires us to lower some of the expectations we've done, so therefore offsetting expenses. So, Mr. Timniak, I'm going to hand it to you to explain to Councilwoman Shake the reasoning on that.
A couple of the items you mentioned are new positions, we put in new positions or they're vacancies, so the $101,000 refuse payroll reduction, those are two vacancies right now, we're not going to fill. We feel like right now is not a time to fill, and we're going to roll out a long-term plan to address refus, which could also.
Sanitation Department, $101,340, or you're referring to which department?
That is, that is specifically to the sanitation, what, to answer your question. The senior services, that was a proposed new position in the mayor's budget, which was an outreach coordinator, which we're not going to fill right now, going out to hire somebody new to bring them in, in this uncertain time, presents a whole bunch of other issues as far as training and, you know, bringing people in, and lots of questions around the senior center remain open right now. So adding a new position there, with so many of the current positions being reworked to fit in the new services we're trying to offer to seniors, we felt like that wasn't, that wasn't something we could, we could recommend any longer.
So can I ask a question, so for the senior services that we have, was there some type of assessment that went out for that particular department to then re-address how we're serving our seniors in the middle of this department? I mean, in the middle of this pandemic right now, moving into 2020 and then 2021?
Yes, we've been, yes, we have, we've been monitoring this on a weekly basis, trying to determine where the current staff we have right now and the roles we hired them to do, and how they're able to better fulfill. I mean, one of the big things is getting meals to the seniors right now. So we've been shifting some of the programming side of things over to the meal side of things, and we're, 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 I want to say pulling back the outreach, because, you know what, everybody's now doing outreach, which wasn't the case before. And I don't have to tell you, the senior center hasn't been open to seniors coming in for two and a half months now. So this is a great area where we're reworking what the current staff has from what was originally proposed to the council in, in March.
So how many staff, just for the public's understanding, how many staff members do we currently have without this addition of a position?
At the senior center right now?
Correct.
Give me a second, I'll look that up in the book.
So one of the things, Caitlin, while he, while he looks that up, the finance department, over the last week, basically went back to every department head and said, listen, the reality is, the world we're living in has changed, and we have to be very smart with our money going forward, so what you'll, what you'll notice is, this is an across-the-board, looking at everything, not just targeting any, literally every. Smart with this, right, Chris, do you have that number?
Yes, we currently have seven full-time and one part-time, and the part-time is through SWAC a grant, so we offset that with some town money and the SWAC a grant to pay for that one individual. So the mayor proposed eight full-time, including a new position of the outreach coordinator, which we felt like isn't, isn't there, so. That was the rationale behind that, is that, so.
So.
What?
So the majority of the council and the mayor's office feels that our senior services are being served well in the current situation, we don't need additional people in that office to help them, is that what you're saying? Yes, Laura's, Laura's telling us, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we could move on, the library being decreased $125,000, where in the middle of the pandemic, I mean, they have been one of the most active, community-oriented support systems for our families and individuals, including our seniors, this entire time, so I, I, I do not agree at all that we should be decreasing the library, but I'd like to understand how we came to such a huge number to decrease that funding.
So, Chris, would you answer that?
Yeah, so the rationale on the library was, we rolled it back to what was proposed last year. Moving forward, again, they're, they're like the seniors said, they're not going to be offering the same programming in the budget which was proposed to us by the library board, and, you know, Sherry, the library director, back in January, is obviously going to have some changes moving forward on how they're going to offer their services. So we figured we'd roll that back as, hey, every department's got to chip in to get to cover the new revenue reductions we have to include. We'd roll that back, and then we were taking into account sort of new standards, which we're seeing as a theme going forward, as we have a new health insurance number, because we haven't been using as much health insurance. So Anthem Blue Cross lowered that, which was a big employee saving, so the library's going to be able to benefit on that. The insurance savings we have, also the library's going to benefit on. We have a new electricity contract, which we negotiated a lower kilowatt per hour rate, which we made adjustments, you heard that throughout the course of the budget. We have a new gas and oil contract with Santa, which we just locked in at an incredibly historically low bid number for the town. So we made adjustments throughout the entire, the entire board, this entire town, not the board.
Sorry, so in the actual $125,000 decrease, what services would be, and I'm actually, I'm looking down because I received two emails from board members from the Stratford Library Association who are not in favor by any means, and I agree with them, for decreasing the library funding.
So, Chris, Chris, if you can answer Ms. Shakes, and then I'm going to, I'm going to try to get every council opportunity, so I'm going to move on, so go ahead, if you can answer that.
Sure, about eight days ago, I reached out to Sherry, the director of the library, and I asked her, you know, I said, I'm pretty sure you thought this call was coming, what type of projections do you have for programming next year, and what type of budget adjustments can we look to make forward? She was very clear that she had to reach out to her board and talk to her board about, you know, coming back with a recommendation before locking it in. I talked to her again this, this afternoon, and I floated the idea that we would be proposing tonight a $125,000 reduction. She indicated to me that she was going to have to go back to her board, but it was something they could live with, and I think the emails coming forward is reactionary, I mean, the library's. I mean, the library's applying for the PPE, the Federal Employee Protection Program, so they're gonna, we don't know the amount of money which would come into that program, but we can look at other towns and see what other monies come in from that. So there's a lot of unknowns the library's gonna be experiencing over the next couple months. So I think one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, based upon the rationale of, hey, we're trying to reset the number to what it was last year, because we have such a large, large revenue hole we have to make an adjustment to because of the times, rolling it back to last year, and then making adjustments on top of it, like I mentioned, the healthcare and the energy and all that other stuff. I, I, you know, calculated about one hundred and twenty-five thousand was, was a very livable reduction for the library.
Mr. Timniak, can I, which town do you live in?
Caitlin?
I just want a comparison. Which, which town do you live in?
I live in Fairfield.
So did the Fairfield-
Caitlin, I'm moving, I'm gonna move on.
We have, we have one main library where our residents are utilizing their services.
Councilwoman Sheik, I'm gonna move on, because there's a lot of councilmen that wanna ask questions. Mr. Taveras, sir, give the opportunity? Any discussion on the item, Mr. Taveras?
Hold on, hold on, I'm trying to get back in here.
Yep.
Okay, no, my concern was one of the library also. I was just trying to write down all of the, the different amendments, so. And you can go ahead and bypass me.
All right, I'll come right back to you.
Excuse me, one thing, Chairman, are we still just talking about the one point one?
This is only discussion on the amendment by Mr. Poissons, that's it.
Okay, but not about the mill rate?
No, just- Greg, Greg, on the line, Greg, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, I've got dozens.
Go ahead.
First, first I'll, I'll use the word incredulous, that you used the word a moment ago about courtesy. Chris, this, this amendment is very broad. We've gone without budget workshops. We've had close to three months to work on this as a team, and now the, the governor's given us until July to pass the budget. What is your imperative to pass this budget tonight with all of these amendments?
Greg, I'll answer it. I'll answer it. I made the call as chair, and per, per the town, per the charter, we have a minimum of twenty-four hours that anybody can call a special meeting, okay? We, we had conversations on Monday morning. I wanna get the budget done so that the printing companies that send out our bills, send out our mill rates, send out our, our, everything. We, we have a job, this is unparalleled time we're living in. Again, we all know that every municipality in Connecticut and the United States is going through it, okay? The point is, I wanna keep everything, as well as everybody else in the administration, moving as smoothly as possible for people's day-to-day lives, okay? We have had, to your point, three months of conversations about this, and many of your, all your answers have been answered by Dawn, by Jay, by Dawn, by Chris, okay? But the bottom line is, I made the call, we wanna keep this thing moving, keep things on track, all right? A lot of time, because people become accustomed to when their bills show up, and I want that to be very, very important to them. So we're moving, we're, we're having this tonight, these budget items, excuse me, these expenditures that we just, that we just, that we just, every-
All right, I'll, let me ask the, first, Chris, I'll, I'll state for the record, I'll state for the record that ninety percent of my questions were not answered. And I could list those for everybody, in case there's obviously a confusion over what is an answer, but, you know.
Hey, what, what questions do you have, Greg?
I've sent them each three times, noting which ones were not answered. So let's stay, which is frustrating, which just means that not only have you, we ignored due process over the last three months, not only we trying to ram through this million-dollar shift of income, but we're, we're doing it without any awareness and no precognition. And we didn't have a talk on Monday. I mean, if you guys are meeting-
If you, Greg-
And avoiding due diligence and excluding three of your council members.
Ms. Ken?
I mean, just, just-
Not due diligence, okay? I, we have all been asking about this, and I've been on countless email chains, we're, we're Dawn, we're Jay, we're Chris, have CC'd many responses back to you. I'm not gonna get in the weeds with you. I don't know every single email you've ever sent, unless it's been CC'd, okay? If you have any questions-
All right, so let me, let me go to some specific questions. What's, I'll go, start with the library, and please grant me time to ask the questions.
I will.
And to have them answered. To the library, the majority of their costs are in salaries. What was the library's ideas on where they could cut their costs by the proposed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? You know, like, or you mentioned an oil, how much would they benefit from oil? How much would they benefit from improved health insurance rates? How would they, how did the library propose to you that they would reach that one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Chris, go ahead. Mr. Timniak, you're on mute, Chris, you're on mute. Hold on, Chris, you're on mute.
Councilman Ken, I would say to answer that, I reached out to the library eight days ago, asking for, you know, recommendations on where the, where they could be cut. I did not receive any sort of recommendation. The plan from the library was to discuss it at their board meeting tonight, and I spoke to the library director today, this afternoon. I've actually spoke to her twice today, and the sense I got from the library director is that the one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is obtainable relatively easily.
But they have no idea, and you have no idea, on what easy represents. Just to clarify, because nobody knows yet, but we think it's gonna be easy.
So to clarify, to clarify, like every department, they're gonna have to make decisions, and I've offered my assistance to the library director, based upon services they're performing now, services they're gonna perform in the future. Hours of operation, the library's gonna be open. There's a whole bunch of different things which are coming in, like I said, and opportunities the library's gonna have for applying for the PPE Employment Loan Protection Program. Like, there's a lot of opportunity for the library to come out better than the one twenty-five they're losing on the expense side right now. And when you look at their, their itemized budget, I mean, there's a, there's a lot listed in that itemized budget, which I don't know, I mean, certainly a full year of service is gonna be hard to do.
Chris, I'm gonna ask for the record, for the record, that the proposed twenty-twenty-one budget does not include an itemization for the library. Prior years always had that itemization that would break out salaries and books and supplies and curriculum, et cetera. Can you make a promise that we, we would go back to the itemization of the Library Association?
We can include it, we can include it in there. This was, this was one of Jay's things. We end up sending the library a number, and that's what we wanted to just approve, was the number, because we don't, I don't control their expenses, or, I mean, it's their decisions, it's the library board of how they wanna operate. So the town council and the mayor makes, you know, decides on how much money we're gonna send them to offset, and we don't cover a hundred percent of their budget either.
Chris, I have about six more distinct questions. I'll go to the next one. The economic development payroll reducing by fifty-two thousand. We, we have a problem attracting commercial investors to the town. We get a little bit, but, so why, what will be lost by reducing? Is that a proposed position, or is that a?
It, it was a proposed position, and we're gonna try to combine that position, we'll keep it at the part-time, but we're gonna combine that position with a, a grant. I'm trying to think of the name of the grant right now, and I'm drawing a blank on it. So we're gonna keep the employee, and the employee's gonna split time from economic development with the assignments assigned through the grant.
Hope for grant, okay.
Any other questions, Greg?
Yes, I do, I have a few more, thank you for your patience. I'll go to sanitation. I didn't look up how number of people are in there now, but we're not only choosing not to fill two vacancies, we're also reducing overtime. Are we restructuring sanitation so services can remain consistent even after two FTEs and overtime are removed?
We're gonna address, address a new, I, I try to answer that question, or we're gonna try to address that through the CIP program with advancements in technology for how we pick up garbage and recycling.
Is that gonna be part of the twenty-twenty-one CIP? Will you be amending the proposed CIP? Did you, you just said yes?
Yes, that's right, Greg.
I, I'm not.
So we're, we have a future modernization slash technology solution, but we will, will likely have a gap in service delivery for the next at least one fiscal year?
No.
No.
There will be a gap in service delivery, Greg.
Okay.
No, there'll be no gap, these are vacancies.
All right, but we're reducing overtime, so I'll, I'll leave that one alone and move on. I'm gonna go back on to the revenue side.
Yep.
Why did we decide to reduce property tax by four hundred and seventy-two K?
Okay.
That's based upon our collection estimates, that's based upon right now, you know, COVID time, unemployment rate, there's, there's a lot which goes into that, that number. I'm watching other, other towns make similar adjustments, and I think it's fiscally prudent to do that.
Right, just, and I, I agree with Timniak, Chris Timniak on that, the rate's going from ninety-eight point five to ninety-eight point two-five, so we're making fiscally conservative decrease of twenty-five basis points, again, very, very similar to all the other municipalities that are doing this, so.
All right, and investment income, when we wrote the budget, the interest rates haven't changed much over the last four months, let alone the last two. Why are we having this last-minute recognition that investment income is going down by, what, by two-thirds?
Yep, so.
So, and I think Dawn can add more of the details on the investment side of things.
Hi, this is Dawn Sevo. Greg, so the investment income had been increased the previous year when Jay, the former finance director, decided to not keep a compensating balance in the local bank and to put our money in some short-term investment fund at the state. And that rate is based on current treasury rates, and since it has gone down to zero now, the Federal Reserve has dropped the rate to zero, so that's gone down considerably, so the estimate has to come down. And I've talked to other finance directors in the GFOA, and most are doing the same thing if they have money in short-term investments. So we're not gonna realize that, so it's, it's really needs to be-
Yeah, Dawn, I understand property tax and the investment income, thank you for the explanation, but, and Chris, I have a number of other specific points that I need to ask, that I need to ask, but the issues of, say, property tax and investment income were identified months ago, but never brought to the council for a discussion. And therein is the frustration and my quote allegation that we failed-
So, Greg, I'm gonna stop.
You'd like me to move on and not complain?
No, no, no.
I'm gonna go, I'll use Dawn again and go to debt service.
Greg, I'll actually answer that question for you. And again, anybody logically thinking about this can understand and appreciate this, and I mean this with the most respect, but two months ago, the world was not in the financial crisis and dire that we are in today. A lot, we are changing daily, the world is changing daily. I have clients I talk to daily about their investment accounts. Everything is changing, and I know you, you can understand this and appreciate, I'm not talking down to you. But the bottom line is, two months ago, we were not realizing the ten-year treasury note was not at zero two months ago, in safe conservative bond investments. So let's move on, I'll give, I'll grant you one more question here, and then I wanna move on, give everyone a chance, please.
Well, look, look, we'll go to debt. Why is debt retirement, why are we adding four hundred and fifty thousand dollars? We thought we were gonna save six hundred and fifty, and we erased that six hundred and fifty and said, nah, we made a mistake back in January. Now we're adding another four hundred and fifty.
Can you answer that, please?
Yes, that is the, the TANs note, which the council passed a month and a half ago. That's, it's a tax anticipation note. It allows us to borrow up to fifty million dollars, because the state of Connecticut allowed us to pass that, so the residents don't have to pay their bill till October first. Well, we're gonna have bills in July, August, and September. We've done cash flow analysis, we've submitted it to the banks, and based upon the interest rates we're getting back and the amount of time we'd have to borrow that, the estimate's around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of what that would cost if we were to borrow, borrow the money authorized to do that.
Are we going to-
Our hope is not to borrow-
Are we going to, Chris, are we going to list the fifty million dollars? So at price they market rate, are we gonna pay a premium rate so we can recognize some cash?
It's, it's going to be a, I don't know, maybe, maybe Dawn can answer that.
Oh, we're not, we're not, it's not a bond sale, so there's no premium involved, we're just, we're just getting some short-term notes. So we're just borrowing money, and we're going to have to pay an interest rate when we pay it back, and it's short-term, and will probably need to be paid back, you know, in less than a year. So this was the estimate that we originally got, what the cost would be. We haven't gone out for it yet, so we don't know exactly what it's going to be, but it's, it's a significant enough amount that it needed to be addressed in the budget, and that meant that there could be cuts made other places. I, I hope that answers your question.
So, Greg?
Thank you, Dawn. And the police department.
Last question.
Who are we cutting at administration, and how many patrolmen are we losing?
Mr. Timniak?
So, in the administrative side, we had a employee retire, and we're not gonna fill that employee. The role of that has been absorbed, that position's been absorbed by other administrative police workers, and then the ninety-three thousand reduction in payroll is holding off on, on hiring two patrol members for the next fiscal year.
And I believe we're still at one hundred and three, Mr. Timniak on patrol, on police?
Yes.
Thank you. Greg?
Chris, you can move on, go ahead.
Paul, coming back to you, Paul, Taveras, Mr. Taveras, Councilman Taveras, sorry. Go ahead, sir.
You can go ahead and move on.
Do, do you wanna ask questions?
My questions pretty much were answered.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harder, going around the circle.
I don't know, hopefully you can hear me okay. I had some difficulties. You know, I know our concern was about the library, but one of the things that you have to realize, after talking to two board members of the library, the library does have some events, social events per year, about three or four events that help them raise money, the galas that they have, and they also have the book sale, and that can bring anywhere from sixty, you know, thirty to sixty thousand dollars. There are also, since we're in the event of the COVID, there are some grants that they could actually receive to help with some of the online programs that they're actually having for some of the school students, even though the, the library is not functioning one hundred percent. So let's just keep that in mind. The thing that we're going through right now was not something that we could plan for. So financially wise, I think the town and the mayor and the staff has done so well with the circumstances that we have been placed in front of us. And I know we have some quirms and some, some debates about, you know, where the money should go, what services will suffer, but I think in this environment right now, today, I think all our services are doing pretty well, from what I hear. And yes, there are some questions about this and that, but I think that overall, senior services are doing well. They're saving money by actually not opening up the, the senior center and the bus services and things like that. So you also- So you also have to look about savings part of it. So, so the library is actually saving money, even though they're paying staff that may not be there, but they're actually saving money or operating hours openly. Custodial costs and things of that nature. So again, in this epidemic that we're serving, right now, there are grants available for those different services, senior citizen services, for food and transportation. And so there are a lot of things that are out there for these agencies to, you know, to have applications for. So I, I just don't want people to lose sight of the fact that we're in a pandemic and that it was unexpected and that there are some cost factors that are not gonna be 100%. And there are some things that people are gonna have to actually swallow. If it was a normal budget season where we didn't have this, you know, pandemic and there were costs, you know, values associated with it, then I would understand. So again, I'd like to thank the staff of the mayor's office for producing a budget that's acceptable and it's responsible for the timeframe that we're in right now. And, and they've done a great job, and I think it's equal and it's fair across the board with all other departments. And a lot of departments have actually taken, you know, taken a crunch and a step back about what are some of the things that they actually needed. So as far as public works with sanitation, you know, I know that there were some retirements there. I know that there were some, you know, union obligations where people moved up. And the services will not suffer, but there are some positions that will not be filled and some monies will continue to be saved. But we'll still operate at 100%.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. Ms. Dancher, do you have anything to comment, to discuss on this item, on amendment? Ms. Dancher?
Hi, this is Laura Dancher, District 10. I just wanted to say that.
On this amendment, Ms. Dancher?
On this amendment, yes. On this amendment, it looks like we've got cuts across the board right from the council clerk through all of our departments. And current situation we're in, it's a responsible way to move forward. There's no reason to hold off on, on moving forward with this budget like we, we planned. So as far as keeping our services with the seniors and the library, I believe that as a council, we're always gonna support them going forward. Like we discussed already, this is an unknown year. And it's a precedent really for us. So I think it's a very responsible list of amendments here, so we're good.
Thank you, Ms. Dancher. Mr. O'Brien, Councilman O'Brien, anything start that you'd like to weigh in on this amendment, please?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, a budget's an estimate of income expenditure, as I understand it. An estimate being the key word. So I want to thank Chris, Dawn, Mayor Hoydick, and your staff for your work on this difficult plan that avoids raising the original proposed mill rate of 39.64. Great job. Thank you.
Mr. Counsel, thank you, sir. Councilman Connor, anything, sir, on this amendment discussion?
Yeah, can you hear me okay, Councilman Pia?
I can.
You can? Okay. I'm kinda co-tailing on what Mr. O'Brien just said. You know, normally a budget is, is a guesstimate, and it's usually pretty close to what you can guarantee. This year, I could almost bet everybody on that table, it's gonna be different just because of the evolving. Could be better, could be worse. So I think this is a starting point where we've scrubbed it down as much as we could to keep things going. There were obviously some people that, some organizations that took short. But if you look across the board, everybody had to give a little bit, and all the players were, the, the players were adequately prepared in the last few weeks, the operational folks. So anyhow, with that, move on.
Mr. Perillo, Councilman Perillo, anything on this amendment, sir?
Just briefly, I want to thank the mayor's staff. This is an unknown time. And when this all started, I knew that this was gonna be a big mountain in front of us. And I'm happy with all the departments knowing that we're in this together. Just a point on public safety for the town's point. I'm very confident that the first responders, though they're making their cuts and they're helping us through this time, I'm confident none of the services to the, to the residents are gonna be interfered with.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman Perillo. Mr. Poissons, anything on this discussion, your amendment, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to state that this amendment keeps the previously proposed mill rate at 39.64, which means that for the third year in a row, we have lowered the mill rate. We've lowered the tax rate, which is what our constituents have asked us to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poissons. I have nothing on this with that. Margot, I'm gonna roll, a roll call vote on that.
Chris, a motion to table the amendment?
Mr. Can, roll call votes been called. Mr. Mr. Pickett?
Okay. This is Margot Pickett, council clerk. This is the roll call vote for the amendments for item 1.1. Ms. Dancher?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo?
Yes.
Mr. Poissons?
Yes.
Mr. Can?
No.
Mr. Harden?
Mr. Harden, yes.
Mr. Taveras?
No.
Ms. Sheik?
I vote no, but point of order, Mr. Chairman, if Councilman Can motion to table that.
Roll call.
Okay, I'm just.
There's no point of order, roll call. Yeah, okay.
The vote is seven in favor, three against.
I didn't, Ms. Pickett, her point of clarity, for, for the record, you didn't come back to me. I'll vote yes, Councilman Pia.
Oh, Mr. Pia? Thank you.
Thank you. Seven, three. Okay. Excellent, thank you. Going back to the original motion, Mr. Poissons, as amended, item 1.1 as amended, roll call, roll on that.
No, we're gonna have a discussion on this.
Excuse me, discuss, Greg, sorry. You're right, you're right.
Thank you.
Almost there. Go ahead, Greg.
I'm gonna, everyone, well, do I have the floor?
You have the floor, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm gonna read a statement into the record. It should not take long.
Go ahead, Greg.
"There's nothing negative about due diligence, but the majority of town councilors consider the process of evaluation and investigation to be negative, meaning questions were not answered, workshops were canceled, public forums were not scheduled. And it's that refusal to engage in discussion, as witnessed by this introduction of all these amendments, that is very disconcerting. Discussions are not arguments. So the desire to ignore questions and avoid explanations, that seems to me to be a breach of public accountability. The governor gave us till July to pass this budget. We're being required to attend a special meeting with only two days' notice. And the residents and the taxpayers who call Stratford their home, they deserve better. The town's operating expenses continue to grow at a rate almost three times greater than our economic development. Two solutions to remedy our anemic commercial sector were offered and rejected by the majority of councilors. First, the town acknowledges it does not have the capacity to apply for business development grants. Relying on part-time and interns has not been an effective solution. Other municipalities apply for and take that money, but not Stratford. Second, a strategic marketing plan, it's proven effective as an intervention to build relationships with commercial developers and investors. The RFPs for summer schools are a good example of why we need a new approach to working with that industry. By rejecting these market-based solutions, the majority of councilors have decided that Stratford will not compete with its neighboring municipalities. For the second year in a row, the town is increasing its long-term debt by 3.5 million to subsidize its current operating expenses. This money's not borrowed for investment, but merely to provide a means to celebrate a 0.5% increase in the mill rate. It's not a decrease in taxes like some councilors keep stating because the Tax Assessor's Own Report said that three-quarters of the households will get increased taxes as a result of the reevaluation. Pretending to reduce, well, you are reducing the mill rate, but it's a gimmick. It's done only to, because we don't have that sufficient economic investment from our commercial sector. We, there's also been an effort to disguise the fact that borrowing this 3.5 million dollars adds over $300,000 a year of bond interest, interest expenses for the next 20 years to the town's long-term debt obligations. And as we've talked tonight, there's a lot we could do with $300,000. The town's also banking on an unprecedented 2.2 million in state funding. Unprecedented times, you've said. The state of Connecticut has its own financial problems, as the mayor noted herself in the budget proposal. But the town is gambling the state will be significantly more supportive than it has ever been before. In addition to using borrowed money, in addition to expecting a bailout from the state, the town is also expecting its low and moderate-income residential homeowners will cheerfully pay a 10% to 40% increase in property taxes. That's a fact. That's a tax increase that's 20 times to 80 times greater than the mayor's 0.5% reduction on the mill rate. Home values increase for the segment of residents. And for those that can afford the $400 to $2,400, $2,400 annual increase in annual property tax for every duplex that's in District 5, District 3, and District 4. That's not something that we should be ignoring because this same segment of low and moderate income, they've been hardest hit by the economic turmoil of stagnant wages and reduced employment opportunities, a situation only made worse by recent COVID-19. I'm almost done. The majority of this town council believes that due diligence is an unnecessary distraction. The majority of this council believes that fiscal oversight, which highlights opportunities, must be avoided. The majority of this council believes that solutions which are proven effective in other municipalities are simply not for Stratford. Think of our 7,000 public school students who strive every day to learn from their mistakes. These students accept constructive criticism. They do not shy away from it. These students know they can only, they only know that they can move forward, no interruptions. They only know they could move forward by owning responsibility. No, do not interrupt. I have the floor.
Sir, and there was a point of order called. I'm going by.
Do not be rude. Point Roberts rule. I'm almost done. Patient. Patient. These students know they can only move forward by owning responsibility and by improving their performance. This town council should follow the example of our public school students and demonstrate a similar commitment to owning responsibility, accepting criticism, and learning. That's the end. Submitted respectfully.
Thank you.
Please have it entered into the record and attached to the minutes.
Mr. Harden, you're next on my. I see you next on the screen right there. Do you have anything to discuss?
I do.
Mr. Harden, he's next on my screen, on the screen here.
No, I don't have anything to say. I'll, I'll pass.
Okay. Ms. Sheik, I see you next, next to Mr. Harden.
I would only say that from the beginning of this pandemic, there were some of us who thought that this would be a very long road because it is a pandemic. So the fact that the majority of this body did not have the foresight in this process of budget workshops, of communicating with each other to further evaluate the budget and not have to have a 48-hour notice, which is in our town charter, and I acknowledge that, as, you know, an acceptable course for this governing body to make decisions that affect everyone in the town. I'm really disappointed.
Thank you, Ms. Sheik. Mr. Taveras, I see you next, sir. Do you like anything?
Yeah, yes, I do. I did a little bit of arithmetic using a property with a gross assessment of $100,000 and compared it with the 2018 gross assessment reflected at 50% of the total 2018 market value with. Today, with this proposed October 1st, 2019 gross assessed value reflecting 70% of the total 2019 market value. And I just find it unconscionable and irresponsible that the average increase of taxes will be over $2,200 for, for the residents, especially those middle to low-income households. Let me borrow what you're saying, Mr. Chairman. Yes, these are very tough times. And now these folks will be faced with a financial tsunami because I've lost two neighbors in my neighborhood that were the breadwinners of their houses. So how can I tell their families that also to boot, you are going to get a substantial increase in taxes? If it was equitable across all 10 districts, I wouldn't have an argument. But this, me, is a target to districts 3, 4, and 5. And I just feel that it is absolutely just incredulous that. And without empathy, that this is going to, has the potential of going through. So I just would like to know, what do we tell those folks? What do we tell those folks that are gonna have a hard time with that increase of taxes?
Thank you, Mr. Harden. Ms. Dancher, you're next on my screen. If any, anything, anything, especially on the item?
I do. First of all, I would like to remind Mr. Can that there was a public hearing on the budget. I believe he was in attendance, and it was on April 27th. Just to refresh.
Public forums, no. Public forums, too, were not held.
Don't interrupt me, please, because I didn't interrupt you, so let's, let's keep going here. And I would also like to say that we never refer to the budget as being a tax decrease. We refer to it as a mill rate decrease. That means that anyone who's had their home revaluation the same or lower will receive a slight tax decrease. Anyone whose home assessments went up will in fact pay slightly more, but not as much as they would if the mill rate did not go down again for the third time in, in, since I've been a counselor. So I feel that this, and because of the pandemic, I feel that it's very important to move forward with this budget. There's no reason to hold it up because of the pandemic. We are all here. We are all speaking. We are able to have meetings. We are able to discuss. And I believe that we're discussing it in a very responsible way. Anyone who does not feel that way is really just being combative. And I don't think that that is a, is a, is a very effective way to behave as part of this council. I'm very proud of what we've done. We've done. I'm very proud of our administration. We have great people in our finance department and in our administrative department. And I am confident that we will not lose any services. And to hold it up just because for the excuse of a pandemic is the irresponsible way to go. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien.
Yes, Bill O'Brien, 9th district. I totally agree with you, Laura. And in my district, Mr. Taveras, thanks to reassessment, taxes are going up too. Mine are going up. Talked to people in Orno who are not happy. But that's what happens with reassessment. We'll live with it, and it'll help the town.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir. Mr. Perillo, I see you next on the screen. Any discussion on the item, Mr. Perillo?
I don't have anything to add.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Connor, any, any discussion on the item?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to address some things here. I'd like to talk about the so-called North End/South End battle that's been going on as far back as I can remember. And now it's filled with folklores, lies, and mistruths. And in North End, there are a number of condos and affordable units. I'm gonna speak about my condo unit, which I have lived in 22 years. There's 315 units. Our average price is 175 to 200K. They were built in the late 1970s, 1970s. My assessment went up, and it went up last time. We have a diverse crowd. There's wives, there's African-Americans, Asians, Hispanics, and senior citizens. The senior citizens group I'm gonna talk about, invisible older divorced or widowed women. I know a number of this group were bought into the units, units from 2001 to 2008. If you remember, everything was high then. Today, many of them bought when the mortgage was very high, and they can't sell or recoup their money. So they're paying their mortgages and are paying their increased taxes. So your recommendation to pass on taxes that were identified to an outside agent for objectivity purposes, not these people, I think it's short-sighted. I think it's self-service, so you can play the north-south card. I will not be supporting any such action that affects my constituents. I will not be supporting any such action that affects my constituency so yours can benefit. That is redistribution of wealth, expecting one group to pay for another without considering ramifications. Have a good day.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Poissons, any discussion on the item? Sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
You have the floor.
I would like to state again that we lowered the mill rate. Taxes are not going up because we made a higher budget. Taxes are going up because the assessments went up, which means your house is going to be worth more when you sell it. These assessments were done across the whole state. It wasn't just a company randomly coming into Stratford and raising our taxes as one counselor would like you to believe. He would also like you to believe everything that he states is the God's honest truth. He doesn't say where he gets his facts from. Most of it is opinions. And when I tried to make my point of order before, it was because he was saying the majority of the council believes in this and we believe in that. Nobody should be speaking for the majority of the council. You speak for yourself during discussion of a motion. Don't give opinions, just give facts and tell us where you get the facts from. Back them up, that you got them from the finance director, that you got them from Mr. Timniak, that you got them from the mayor's office. We lowered the mill rate. We lowered the tax rate. This is a good budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poissons. And I'm going to make a statement that I've had some thoughts on. This has been a long process for us all, and I appreciate all of you. You put in time, you put in effort. I'm first going to thank the mayor again for the countless hours that she's put into this and her family for, for having to deal with the countless hours. So thank you, Mayor Hoydic, the entire team, the administration, Mr. Timniak, Masevo. If I didn't state someone who we considered a colleague and a very dear friend, and Mr. Walver, who many of us have had the opportunity to work with for the last few years, foreseeable years. And for the newer councilors, I know it was a short time with you, but with and he put a lot of work into the crafting of this initial budget. And it's an honor to him and I appreciate Jay's hard work and everything. We've gotten through it. I want to thank you all and a couple of points to make. We have, the way I view everything in my daily life, whether it be professional or personal, is that I have a fiduciary responsibility to every client that I serve or to every constituent resident of the town of Stratford. That's the way I look at any budget. It's the way I look at any financial plan. And that's the way I'll continue to live my life. So from fiduciary responsibility standpoint, I stand high in that and I know everybody else does. There's a lot of uncertainty and I know this and we have to be, excuse me, we have to be pragmatic fiduciary managers going forward for this town. So beginning in July, I'm going to be instructing the administration to work with us and provide a new item on the agenda as a monthly cash flow report so we can evaluate the town's month-to-month cash flow going forward as it's going to be critical going forward for the rest of 2020. Thank you. And I'm looking forward to working with the councilors on that. Now, again, that'll begin in July, council meeting. Expenditures, we all got to tighten our belt. That's a, that's a straight up, that's a straight up truth. Some people won't like it. Some people find it the right way to do things. The bottom line is everybody in this United States is going to be tightening their belt for the next year. And we have the Board of Ed, we didn't really discuss much. Excuse me, I want to just publicly thank Board of Ed Chair Allison Del Fanny, Vice Chair Amy Welcy, and the five other members of the Board of, excuse me, Board of Ed, as well as the Finance Committee for working so well together this year with the council and the administration on future initiatives such as, but not, obviously not limited to residency and consolidation of services. These are things that not only are logical and straight up responsible for any municipal government to look at, but they're going to save the town thousands of dollars, countless dollars going forward. So I appreciate all their work because I know they have the best interest of the community going forward as well.
Chris, Greg, Can?
Mr. Can?
When you're done, Chris.
I have the floor, sir. Yep.
Wanted to get in before you called the vote. Thank you. Go ahead.
The Board of Ed's going to be receiving a large amount. They just found out in the excess in, to the tune of 990,000 from the feds due to this COVID. So that's going to be an excellent piece for them to work with. And the bottom line is, I say this, and I know I stand with the rest of the councilors on this call to say that when the Board of Ed sits back down to go through their adjustments and line items, no, I do not stand for any, any budget that has a reduction of any teachers. I will not stand for that. Regarding a couple of the points that we've decided to make more, some have decided to make more political than factual is, you know, the bottom line is I'm happy, and I proudly say this, that I'm happy that Stratford residents' homes are increasing in value. The fair market value of your home, which in meant for the overwhelming majority of Americans in the United States, their home is the greatest single asset they own. Okay? And I am happy that most people's homes are increasing in value. Okay? The bottom line is that is a smart investment and that's a positive for the town. All right? Lastly, you know, I am proud. I know people, people have said it. I'm proud that everyone has worked together on this and we are going to be decreasing the mill rate again for the third consecutive year. I appreciate all your hard work. It's not easy being volunteers. Most people, you know, I'm sure all of you have had this said to you. Most people think we get paid for this. All right? So I thank you all for your countless hours. We appreciate your time. So Margot, I'm going to call the vote on this. Everyone's had a chance.
No, Chris, Chris, response to, Can, just to shortly respond. It's just respectful if somebody makes a false statement, we have a chance to correct it.
Call the vote.
I'd like to correct Mr. Poissons' statement that I have referenced, I have referenced the CAFRA. The CAFRA has my facts. The tax assessor's document has my facts. You want to ignore the fact, Ken, the facts are on the documents. The facts are in the record.
Call the question.
Mr. Can, you don't.
So Ken Poissons said it's a tax decrease. It's not. It's a tax increase for three-quarters of the household.
Point of order.
The point is, this has nothing to do with North End/South End. This has to do with my district and my district getting a 40% increase. Your mill rate decrease, your mill rate decrease is only coming about because you're borrowing $7 million that has to be paid off. By increasing that. So Ken is wrong, Jim is wrong, the fact is in the record. There you go.
Greg, have some respect. The mayor called point of order.
Ms. Pickett, please call the roll, ma'am.
This is Margot Pickett, council clerk. This is the roll call vote for item
1.1.
1 dot 1 as amended. Ms. Dantrell?
Proudly, yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Perillo has texted me because he lost his connection and then came back in. So he is voting yes. Mr. Poissons?
Yes.
Mr. Can?
No.
With a factually substantiated no.
Oh, my God.
Sorry, Dave, you go the way you want to go, man.
Unbelievable.
Mr. Harden?
Of course.
Yes. Oh, yeah, of course, you're right.
Mr. Taveras?
Vociferously no.
Noted. Ms. Shake?
No.
Mr. Pia?
I vote yes.
Seven to three.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. And that's the item on the agenda is item 1.2. I'll entertain that motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 1.2, please.
Motion by? Seconded by Mr. Harden. Being that we had discussion combined initially, we're going to call for a roll call vote. Ms. Pickett?
This is Margot Pickett, the council clerk. This is the roll call vote for item 1 dot 2. Ms. Dantrell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Again, Mr. Perillo has lost his connection, but he is voting yes via text message to me. Mr. Poissons?
Yes.
Mr. Can?
No.
Mr. Harden?
Yeah.
Mr. Taveras?
No.
Ms. Shake?
No.
Mr. Pia?
Yes.
Seven to three.
Motion approved, seven to three. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Floor?
Yes, before you adjourn. Before you adjourn, Chris Timniak is going to need the council members to sign a rate bill and a tax warrant now that the vote has been taken.
Correct.
So that, Mr. Timniak has to indicate how he wants that to happen.
Wait, Chris, just very quickly.
Very clearly, we'll circulate, we'll circulate that tomorrow. We'll start it via scanning and emailing back and forth, or we can even open it up, stop by town hall and sign it.
Chris, what I'll do, Mr. Flor and Chris, what I'll do is I'll call you first thing when we wake up in the morning. We will coordinate that and we will make sure that it's done in proper manner. Thank you, Mr. Flor.
Thank you.
A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Bill O'Brien.
Bill O'Brien, all in favor?
Aye.
You all?
Maybe three of them want to say.
No, I'm having fun. Whoopee doo.